And we are back in open session. No action was taken. So we'll get back on schedule with our minutes right here. Approval. Approval minutes, October 4th, 2022, council workshop meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay. All in favor?
I stand.
Okay. October 18th, 2022, regular council meeting.
Make a motion with, um, accept.
Okay, all in favor? All right, moving along to old business. Ordinance 830, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a municipal election transfer and cost fee agreement between Marlboro County and the town of Clough. Third reading.
Mr. Chairman, this is an agreement like we have with McCall, I believe, where the voter registration or election commission runs the election for Clough. They can recover costs, but it just sort of sets forth the legal part of doing that for them. So staff has no issue with it and recommends that you approve third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion with 830.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, ordinance 832, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of a not to exceed $1,250,000 general obligation bond of Marlboro County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purpose for which the proceeds of said bond shall be expended to provide for the payment of said bond and other matters relating thereto. Second reading.
Mr. Chairman, this is a GO bond that we renew every five or six years. We did it about five years ago. The money is used for capital repairs like roofs. We've done them on the courthouse and the health department and places and as well as some paving of parking lots and also some long life equipment like 10 to 20 year life baccos and those sort of things. So we recommend you approve this. It's a important part of keeping the tax mileage down by doing this with a plan, a method.
Any questions? Anything you want to add?
Move on as 832.
All right, all in favor? All right, moving to new business, the recreation initiative, which we have been already presented, the cost estimates and the sources of funding for our projects. We do have a motion that we need to...
Mr. Chairman, we had, as folks had just got here, we had a work session starting at 4:30 where council went over the details of the recreation ideas and initiative that you all have been working on for a long time now. So there are several items to include in the motion. The first is setting as Phase One items, which means to move forward with the next step would be, of course, the golf course is already under an agreement, so that's there. A splash pad with restrooms at a cost of $400,000, a contribute to the construction of a boardwalk and parking area on the beauty spot side of Lake Wallace to do a partnership with the lake authority to make that work, to do a downtown facility that would have food truck court and restrooms and parking for tourists coming through as well as residences on Broad Street, and then also to allocate money for image concerns, derelict buildings, things that are hurting us when we try to attract people. Those things are all, the motion would be to designate those as Phase One items. Then the motion would continue that you all would direct staff to develop any legal documents or arrangements or anything necessary to further each of these options, and that would include entering into contracts or agreements to purchase of some of the property necessary for the downtown parking area, for example. Then the motion goes on to include direction to staff to set up meetings with potential financial partners, which primarily are the lake authority and the city of Bennettsville at this time, but open to other entities like the school district. And then lastly, the motion would direct staff to engage specialized legal counsel that could advise us on the steps of establishing a referendum to create a special purpose tax district that would generate dedicated revenue for recreation, tourism issues ongoing. This would require a referendum, but we need that legal advice. It's a long motion, but I'm sure the court got it, and that's what we're... It's a long motion, but I'm sure the court got it and, uh, and that's what we're, that's what's being asked.
Everyone understand the motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Plato, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
All right, it is unanimous. All right, moving to appointments to boards and commissions, uh, we have the zoning appeals board.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've talked before about the fact that we have several boards that are not needed until you have an appeal or need to have a hearing on something. And the zoning appeals board is one of those. So we have a potential appeal and we need to activate this board. And but to activate it, we have several folks that their terms are, have just expired. And then we have four folks that have been identified by the codes enforcement that are qualified to serve. Now, I know we're asking you sort of sight unseen, I'll read the letter, the names out to activate this board, but we do that with respect that this will allow us to get past this current situation and then council can clearly evaluate this and see if you want to go in a different direction with appointments. So we're asking you to to give us that, uh, that, give us some credit there that we're doing this for a purpose and we will surely bring it back to you and you can consider who's on there or not on there. So I was going to read the names, um, that they've prepared and the other folks that are already on there. So for District One, they have Jay English. District Two is John Troy Henigan. District Three is, uh, Edith Bridges. District Four is Brian Thompson. District Five is Ella Daniel. District Six is Chris Ratliff. District Seven is Rodney Rummage. And then there's somebody in District Eight, Ms. Margaret Nolan, whose term expires in December. If we, if you were able to approve this, this will give us an active board. We can have this hearing if it comes forward. And again, you have certainly the control of changing this later if you like. So we'd ask that you consider that, approving that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
How long is that term?
That's a good question. You want to set it for six months? I mean, there's certain rules.
I don't, I don't know.
Right.
I'm District Five and I'm, I'm not familiar with that, that person on that board and, you know, I don't want to just put it, put that person there for another year, two, three years. And I'm not familiar with it.
Well, typically, they, all the districts run co-terminus with your district. So to your point, if you appointed somebody, they would run till your term runs out. I don't think it's inappropriate to shorten that term if you feel that's appropriate in order to address your concern, but allowing us to go ahead and have something. I'm not comfortable with, I don't know that it would do us any good to say they all run out the end of December because it might not get done by then. But, you know, maybe they could run out the end of June. Well, just having to think on my feet here, I don't think there's any situ, there's any problem with you replacing somebody that you appoint. So if you, if you, if you all agree to do this and you find somebody else you want to put on there, then you just replace these people. So they're there until.
Yeah, well, my concern is just extending a term and then not being able to appoint because, you know, you can't have two representatives at the same position, so, um, I, I would be willing to, to do that for another, um, sixty days if, you know.
I don't think that's going to get it done.
You don't think it'll get done and that?
But I mean, I, I, not to challenge you, but I mean, these people have been on here and nobody's said a word and, you know, there are vacancies here.
But I'm, but I'm, I'm in the council. I think I, I should have the right to appoint who I want to appoint.
I agree.
You know, and I think I should be familiar with who I appoint, you know, so, you know.
Well, we could go about it.
I don't want to throw a blanket, I don't want to throw a blanket appointment out there.
Well, I, I think if you're doing it, if you're doing it for six months and you replace somebody between that time, I mean, that would be, but I mean, at least, do they have to have some training, the, all of us, all of us have to have training?
It's not as much as.
It's not as much as used to be. Uh, but it'll at least give us a, a, this, I think, I think it'd give the committee opportunity to get moving forward. I mean, since we hadn't put anybody on it in a while and we give, if there's something come up, we could address it instead of saying, we don't have a, a committee available to, to address a, a need. This would at least give us as a, as a full county to have us, uh, have this board in place.
Well, you, you got a case pending now, correct?
Can, can we, y'all, pardon me. Can we wait till December to appoint somebody?
If their agreement with others, we can appoint his in December.
Okay, but can, can the hearing, the, you haven't had anybody file.
No.
Okay. How about if we, if you all do, if you can, do your best to find somebody before the December meeting and we'll do it in December.
And that's what we're willing to.
Okay.
If they like the name, they know the people they want tonight, that's fine.
Well, I, we already putting y'all on the spot and I guess I thought, you know, y'all would be okay with.
Yeah, I think we requested at one point that we get the full list of who, um, needs to be appointed in those lists and we failed to have gotten that yet, so I think that's.
You got, it looks like this. Everybody's got it over and over again.
It was two years ago.
But I'm gonna get it to you again because we, there are a bunch of vacancies and.
But that's, that's kind of convoluted and it's really hard to really see. And so we need a better, you know, view of, of those counts, so we'll know how.
We'll redesign it, so we got it to you, but it's convoluted. I'll take the convoluted because you're right. Um, we'll get you that and if y'all can make an effort to get it for December, it would be a big help for us in the process we have to go through with these things. We haven't had the appeal filed, but we've been put on notice that it may be filed. It's a zoning appeal where somebody wants to use land for what they should use it for. We got to keep that tight.
So you don't want to take any, any people tonight?
I just don't see it going anywhere, so I don't want to.
But if we can, if we can appoint somebody at our district tonight, would that, would that solve?
That's, that's certainly fine.
I'd like to, uh, with that, with the, uh, if it's time, I'd like to appoint Jane List of District One. I think that's who was recommended, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd appoint Rodney Rummage, District Seven.
If anybody knows Ms., what did you say, Ms. Ella whatever name?
Ms. Edith Bridges, she's apparently been on there for some time.
Yeah.
She's on.
Yeah, if anybody knows her, just tell her to get a contact.
I have a contact with Mrs. Stroh. I have. Margaret Nolan. Um, to renew her, um, term.
Margaret Nolan, District Eight.
I'm, I'm familiar with, with, Johnson made me familiar with.
Because she is.
Yeah, I know she is.
Yeah.
So I really, I can reappoint her.
Okay. Okay, so that means we've got, we've got, uh, I'm gonna read them out for the, the record. District One, Jay English, that's affirmed by the District One person. District Two's John Troy Henigan, you want to wait?
I will.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so District Two, John Troy Henigan. District Three, um, is, is, uh, well, has Edith Bridges here, but then you had a recommendation as well, which one?
The recommendation, we could use that law.
Okay, so Edith Bridges, who's been on there already for District Three.
Yeah.
Um, Brian Thompson for District Four.
Now, what I'm gonna do, I'm not going to.
You're gonna wait?
I'm gonna wait on Ms. Lawson. Wait on Ms. Lawson.
Um. District Five is, is Ella Daniels, so.
Ella Daniels, that's the one that I need.
I'm sorry, it takes me a minute.
Somebody need to tell her to contact me because I'm not familiar with her.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna be writing some letters for the new council lady, you know, letting people know to District Six, um, Chris Ratliff, Chris is in Clough and. You want to wait or?
I'll wait.
Okay. And District Seven is Rodney Rummage and District Eight is Margaret Nolan. So that gives us a quorum enough to conduct business with. So I think she got that. If y'all are okay with those, if you can move forward with those, we'll, uh, and we'll come up with a more, less color coded list for everybody and for.
All right, so we need to make a motion to accept those.
Yeah.
And, uh, as you read them out.
I make a motion that we accept the names that have been appointed to the, um.
Zoning Appeal.
Zoning and Appeal Commission.
I save it up motion.
All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. All right, moving to acceptance of bids, we have nine, uh, reports, Mr. Munnell, or no, uh, Mr. Park, financial board.
Mr. Chairman, uh, council members, Mr. Munnell, you have your report in front of you. Uh, general fund revenues for the four months ended, uh, October thirty one, twenty twenty two, uh, totaled one million, eight fifty eight, six forty in comparison to a million, six ninety three, uh, six hundred and twenty six, six hundred and sixteen dollars for the four months ending October thirty one, twenty twenty one. General fund expenditures through October thirty one, twenty twenty two totaled four million, five eighty eight, nine hun, uh, nine hundred and forty dollars of a thirteen million, eight hundred fifty four thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollar budget or thirty three point one two percent of budget year to date. General fund expenditures totaled, uh, three million, eight ninety nine, eight twenty three for the same four months, period ending October thirty one, twenty twenty one. In conclusion, revenues, uh, are up in comparison with the prior year, however, expenditures are up at a, at a higher rate, uh, so a lot of that has to do with the fact that we, I think we are certainly much more fully staffed at this point in time. We had considerable vacancies in the prior year, so I think that accounts for a lot of the difference in the expenditure count, so. Anyway, I don't know, is any questions? We'd be glad to entertain those.
Uh, Mr. Park, you said we've spent thirty three percent of the budget.
Yes, sir.
How does that affect, um, what's going to be coming in, in the next couple of months with taxes?
Well, of course, tax revenues will be coming in for, you know, we will actually see a significant change in, uh, the January and February report, so, uh, so much of our revenues are really tied to tax, uh, collection, so, uh, we, we are obviously lagging in terms of revenues versus, uh, expenditures. Fortunately, the, uh, county has adequate financial reserves in order to, uh, uh, be able to transition through, uh, the tax collection period, so, you know, fortunately, we're in good, good condition in that regard.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Park. Administrator's report?
We did a graph for a while, he would see the money coming in, like no money, no money, there's money. And then expenses, you know, they're going along, so back in the day, um, when I worked here around, I graduated at school, we would have to borrow money to make payroll, so it's sort of stabilized. But you see most of the revenue come in in the, you know, in December, January, in the spring.
Mr. Chairman, as we do each, each month, uh, we have employee service anniversaries. Um, the following employees have five or more years of service to the county. Uh, some of these are part-time folks with fire service and EMS, but today we have a handful. John Alexson with five years, Luke Sides with five years, William Griggs with five years, Courtney Skipper with six years, Christina Crosman with six years, Cynthia Paulson with six years, and Mary Collins with nine years. Um, we, we'll have our, uh, county Christmas dinner on the eighth. Uh, there's a committee, Ms. Dorison, the committee have, are working on the details and it includes all kinds of stuff like people singing and some different things, so it's gonna be a little more lively. Um, but it's not me, I'm not singing. Five thirty on the eighth and we'll also, you know, recognize some retirees like, like Ms. Plato, and so it's, we're looking forward to it, it's always a good event. Um, some interesting information, we're, we finally getting information on the opioid settlement, the big lawsuit that was made against pharmaceutical companies. And, uh, it does appear that we'll get about eighty six thousand dollars. It's just unclear whether we get that every year or how that works. We do know that it, for the most part, has to be used to be spent going forward with more like prevention type things or treatment things.
So how, would that money be, um, allocated towards Trinity or local?
We don't know. And, and what I would suggest to council is that, that the people that like that be at the table and also a few of you all, like you, who have mental health counseling experience, be at the table as we try to figure this out. There's safety in numbers and in generally, I deal with, with, you know, Florence Darlington and Marion and we're all working together trying to figure out the formula. Because if we figure it out by the people coming wanting to get the money, they're gonna tell you the formula. So I would anticipate, Mr. Chairman, here in the next two weeks or so, asking if you can put together an ad hoc committee and let's try to figure this out to get the most bang for the buck.
Mr. Administrator, if I may interrupt you, just, just a quick question on mental health, since we're on this subject, um, what, what is the standing between the Marlboro County, uh, mental health? Because I know at one point we went to Chesterfield, right? We went through, that's where all our mental health stuff goes through. And now Trinity comes in as a private entity, right? But the county, do we offer any type of mental health, um?
I was, I was defer to Dr. Johnson.
Trinity is the, um, substance abuse agency for the state that operates in the county and mental health, of course, Tri-County is the, um, mental health portion that operates, um, those services for the state, um, but up under the county's umbrella.
Is that, is that adequate for Marlboro County, Dr. Johnson?
It's not adequate for anywhere, to be honest about it. This is a, a pandemic in itself and so, you know, mental health and Trinity does all they, um, do all they can, but it's, it's, it's tough for every, um, county now.
Now, so Tri-County is overall all kinds of mental health and Trinity is more substance abuse. And Trinity is quasi private public in Tri-County.
Okay, I've been trying to tie crime, mental health and, you know, just stuff like that together.
Yeah.
And I know that at one point, we had a mental health unit here in the county and I remember when they got dissolved and got moved to Chesterfield, through Chesterfield.
Well, that, I think that was alcohol and drug abuse.
Yeah.
So Trinity now has built little offices all around and we're getting one out here, uh, near the prison. Tri-County still has a thing here. I mean, this opioid money could really help because, I mean, everything, at least from my perspective, law enforcement, crime, mental health is all tied back to drugs and opioids. So maybe this is real money and we can help somebody help.
Help somebody out, yeah.
Um, okay, moving along, just wanted to let you know that, that we worked on this week or I guess it was last week, to get all the paperwork finalized to receive, uh, the money that the legislative delegation was able to get us in a budget proviso. So it's two million dollars, um, and a lot of different agents, a lot of different people who are getting this are working to do the same paperwork. So they've been very helpful on the state level and we want to appreciate what the legislative delegation did to secure this amount because y'all tonight, you saw what, you know, what it can, impact it can have. And hopefully, council's responsible use of this money and others will lead to morals down the line. So we're happy to get that and, and the state, the state did put some more, uh, more work into getting the money on us, but they were very helpful. And we had a couple of things we didn't understand and they fixed it. It's been really a good process. So a little more accountability, I think the governor wanted that, but it didn't make it too hard. And we're, it, it appears that we'll be able to draw that money down and put it in a special account, hold it. We don't have to wait till we're doing something, even though we are doing something. Uh, Steve Akers, our nine one one director, advised us that they have successfully switched over to the next generation nine one one. Now, that's not something that you see if you call, but what it means is there's more central support of all the, what used to be copper telephone lines is now all over the internet. So we don't have a whole lot of copper lines running off the pole in there, we have internet connection. And so if we had a catastrophe here or whatever, they could switch our nine one one center to another county temporarily, just with, just a flip of a, a keyboard stroke. So we're excited about that. There were, of course, you know, some snafus and all trying to deal with the state on this, but we, but Steve has navigated that and, and we're happy with it so far. As far as economic development, had a couple of things to report. The partnership board met this morning, uh, they're gonna have a Christmas drop in on the fourteenth. Uh, one thing that's interesting, I think interesting to council and may warrant some discussion, you know, in another meeting, is that workforce has continues to be a big, big, big part of what we're doing here, as well as image and recreation, the things you're working on. But the board of the partnership voted this morning to, uh, request that Richmond Community College come make a presentation on what they can do with regards to vocational education because feel like we're not getting that from other agencies that we typically deal with. So that was a pretty bold step, but I think it's kind of like steps y'all took with recreation. Folks are starting to want, let's do something, let's try to change our destiny and not wait around. So I was excited about that. The other thing that's exciting is, um, you know, trying to showcase the industries we have and the ones that are doing well, um, and, and keep them happy. And one is Marley, you know, they have a new operations director out there, Justin Dolphins, and Justin has made a real effort to improve the, the image of the facility on the outside and then also on the inside, do things, you know, with the manufacturing line. So he would like to host an event, uh, So, he would like to host an event in early December for what we all, those of us remember as Emerson Park, out on, on Cook Street, 385. So, if you ride by there, he's done a lot to get it fixed. And so, he wants to put on just a casual afternoon thing, come by networking thing, and see that, so that he can tell you about Marley. And then, after, in about 60 or 90 days, he wants to have a full-blown plant tour inside, so that we can see things that are working, and hopefully encourage those folks and show our support. So, we're, we're happy about that, too. And we'll probably do that in conjunction with Chamber of Commerce, because we want everybody that can come to come. So, that's all I had. Along me, you know, didn't want to add too much to it, but thank y'all.
All right. Any citizens of recognition of council members? Let's start with the, we didn't have.
First and foremost, I'd like to take my hat off to the elected committee. I think they did a wonderful job last week. It was a hectic day for them, especially with the missing of Ms. Kane, Lori Moses. But I think they did an excellent job. Also, I'd like to thank and recognize the President of the Democratic Party, Dr. Johnson. We thank, thank you for what you did during this election. You and your team done an excellent job. Yeah, just go to show that, you know, we're patient and hardworking, doing what you do best, getting everybody together. I think the Democratic Party had a great success. We kept our delegation intact. So, I think with, with the election over with, a couple of runoffs, but in our delegation, I, I do think that we as a council in 2023 definitely need to move forward with the thing that we have, the idea that we got in place, and we will need their assistance. They, like I said, they helped them with the $2 million already. We, we, I think it'd be a good gesture, the council invited them to the Christmas dinner to show our appreciation, just a olive branch. We know there's, that there's some, I have a hard feeling, but some, some feelings that need to be mended. It gotta start with us, because they can't do so much. But if we are in disarray, our delegation is gonna keep us at arm's length. We need to come together, we need to bring them to the table, we need to talk to them and ask them, what, what can we do to help them, and they can help us. We are a small town, but there was a long saying, and everybody here, younger than I am, or just older than I am, said, Mr. West. We always had a saying, sticks a stone will break our bones, but name will never hurt. That is not true. Names do hurt. Names not only hurt yourself, they hurt your family, if your family members, your friends. So, we need to be cautious and be respectful of how you say things and what you say about people, about us, you know, about individuals. We cannot go out there and throw mud and think that, oh, it ain't hurt them. It do hurt. It do hurt, because we all got families. And when you say something in a negatory way, whether it's social media, whether face-to-face, it's not, not a good thing. And we are council members, we are the, people look up to us. Although we don't put ourselves on a pedestal, but people do look up to us, and they look at our actions. Everybody in the county, they look at our actions, what we do, what we say, how we walk, how we talk, and when we show disrespect, you know, that's, it, it gonna affect everybody on the county, on the council. So, you know, but with that being said, I hope everybody have a great Thanksgiving. On Saturday, Ms. Eva McCray is having a Thanksgiving dinner. Everybody is invited, is, um, take our order, you know, everything gonna be grabbing goat. Y'all definitely welcome. So, if you, if you're hungry, you know, tired of them burgers and tacos, come down and get some, um, turkey, before Turkey Day.
Ms. Plato.
Thank you. To add to what Mr., first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to all the winners that was re-elected, and pray that they gonna have a successful term and do the necessary thing that they need doing for the county to help us. I want to add to what you said a few minutes ago. We are here, all of us have personal issues, but we are here on council for county issues. And that's what we are here for, not to throw down or throwback at anybody, because everybody have feelings. We cannot conduct ourselves in the manner that some do when you are throwing curve at different people about saying different things and hurting their feelings, because if you look at what our job here on council is approving annual county budgets, capital improvement project, creating meaningful legislation waived by ordinance, resolution, and proclamation. You don't see no way where it said you got to come here and throw dirt at somebody and call them all kind of names and, and just be at their throat, because it's inappropriate. It's inappropriate to try to throw at anybody regardless of what, whether you're Democrat or Republican or what. Some things are better left unsaid, and the way a person think after they leave here, that's their problem. But I, I, I was, had a little issue with a certain, some things, and I said, well, everybody got feelings regardless of how you feel. I don't think council is a place to bring it to. This is, council is a place that we are supposed to be overseeing and doing things to meet the county better. People see us as an image, and when they see somebody out of order, and we sit here and don't say or do anything about it, we looking bad. We're looking bad. And so, I can go on and on about this situation, but I, but the only thing I can say is this, I'm getting ready to go. So, I'm gonna say this, I'm getting ready to leave in another month. But what I'm saying is be careful and mindful how you say things and things about certain things. It's a way to do anything. I got a lot of things I can say about a lot of people, but I keep it to myself, because it ain't gonna do no good to bring it out noise. So, I just keep it to myself and do, holla, holla outward. I won't holler it on the council, I holler it after I leave here and go home. Then I talk junk. But for council, I'm gonna conduct myself at a, as a council person should, and that's respecting everybody up here. I don't think I've never heard anybody's feelings or said anything out the way to anybody up here. And, and everybody here been very respectful to me, and I appreciate that. But again, sometimes things are better left unsaid, and all of us human, regardless of what we do, we can always find somebody that's not gonna satisfy 100%, and they gonna, there's something gonna come along that you're not gonna lack, but keep that lacking to yourself. And don't get it, don't get other people involved in it, because you might not think that you're hurting other people or hurting the council or whatnot, but people out there looking. They see this, they see this program on the TV, and they look at it on, what, YouTube? I think it'm on YouTube. YouTube, so they see what's going on here. And it make us look bad when you, when you throw off on people that you shouldn't throw off on. So, I would say thing, if you got something to say about somebody, kind of limit yourself on what you're saying and say, well, listen, I'm going to council. I'm not going out there to air my personal feelings about people. My concern is doing something to help the council and help Marlboro County, not to throw my feelings out there, left, right, and whatever. But anyway, that's all I got to say. But other than that, everybody else, I got one more month to go. Hate to think about it, but it's coming. And, but I, I've enjoyed everybody here, everybody, I mean, we, we've been a lot of places together, we did a lot of things, we did a lot of laughing, and together and had some good funds together. Ups and downs, and I really, really gonna miss y'all guys, I really am. I'll be tipping back and forth every now and then. I'll see what Ms. Lawson doing. But other than that, I, I don't think I have anything else to say. And I, I'm not saying nothing to defend anyone, but I think right is right and wrong is wrong. And that's about all I can say.
All right, Mr. Strummer.
First of all, Dr. Johnson, thank you. That was a excellent vision, excellent model that you displayed running that Democratic You absolutely blasted it from, from behind the scenes. Nobody, he probably didn't even know the things that you did, the funds that you raised, the events that you attended, the things that you did, you know? Nobody may not even realize it, because you did it behind the scenes. And you, you presented yourself in a professional and excellent, excellent model for anybody to, to follow. I, I know that politics are a passionate subject for a lot of people. However, as council people, we do have to be mindful of the things that we do that could possibly hurt the county, that could possibly hurt relationships that the county needs, particularly in hard times, you know? And nobody can, can say that we're not having hard times. Inflation is up, you know, everything is out of sight. We need funds in the county. We know whether you're Democrat or Republican, the funds have to come from our legislation. They have to vote, the Republicans have to vote for it, the Democrats have to vote for it. You know, that's how we get any grant that comes through, has to be voted on. So, when it comes to little old Marlboro County, we need somebody down there that's thinking about us. We need somebody down there that's, that's not gonna say, well, they're, they're fighting against me, they're, they're doing everything against me, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for Marlboro County. You know, so we just need to be mindful to not scar, you know, particularly, you know, some delicate ego, and that's what, that's what everybody has. So, once again, Dr. Johnson, congratulations on that. And I'm gonna leave that alone. But everybody have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving. The turkey, what is, what is the guy from Waste Management, is Keith, is it?
Keto.
Keto.
Did a good job.
Yeah, he did a good job Saturday. Mr. Carbo, thank you for helping getting those turkeys out.
Thank you for my turkey.
And that was a good thing. Please relay that to Keith. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Carbo, thank you for my turkey.
All right. Just wanna, glad we're moving forward. You know, Dr. Johnson has a passion for his party, Mr. Strummer has a passion for his party, but the election's over with as far as the last one. So, we got, we got, we got a vision ahead of us, we've got some great strides tonight, and like I said, looking forward to them, and we need the delegation to help us, you know? We stay unified and keep moving forward, you know? We continue to move forward, so, you know, politics is, is dirty, you know, if you like it or not like it, but you know, once it's passed, you have to put it to bed and keep moving forward. You know, the whole thing is, you, if you put your hands to the plow, look back, you unfit. So, we got to move forward. And so, with everything we gotta do, so like I said, excited about the recreation stuff we have, so I think we got some momentum, and I think everybody, you know, once you get a train moving, everybody wants to get on. And so, like I said, I think we started the train down the tracks tonight, and like I said, and looking forward to seeing where it's gonna go. And so, like I said, thank everybody for the hard work, and wish everybody have a happy Thanksgiving here. Seems like it's only about a week away, or a little over a week away, so I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Again, to echo Councilman Wood's hats off to our Election Commission for what they did leading up to the election. I don't think many people know the tremendous amount of work that goes into the behind-the-scenes of making sure that the voting machines are correctly inputted in, in the computer and all those other things that I don't think they get credit for, and they did an excellent job in the two weeks leading up to election and on election day. We thank the citizens of Marlboro County. We had a, almost a 41%, you know, voter turnout. For somebody that might be like, eh, that's a big turnout for, for Marlboro County. A 41%, hats off to all of you citizens of Marlboro County for taking that opportunity, whether it was early voting, whether you got out on election day and voted, regardless of what party you voted for, we just wanted you to come out and vote. And I think all of those behind-the-scenes personnel who, who, you know, worked and made phone calls and did all of those little things that compelled people to come out and utilize their, their power to vote. We, we, we're looking to move forward in Marlboro County. And, and, you know, for a while, it may not seem that that's what, you know, the agenda was, but our job is to make the lives of our citizens a little bit better. And I think, you know, we're gonna be doing that with this recreational project that we are about to tackle with some of the initiatives that I think will come down the pipe. I think if we stay connected and, and utilize our elected delegation and utilize our citizens, you know, for their expertise and what they can bring to the table, I think we all can benefit from this place we call home, this place we call Marlboro County. So, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, continue to stay prayed up. We was talking about mental health, please pray. You know, there's a lot of kids that are out here that are, that are hurting, there's a lot of adults out here that are hurting, this is your church members, your neighbors, you know, all people. So, this is the time of year where people really, really go to a dark place during the holiday time. It's a great place, a time of year for a lot of people, but for a whole other set of people, it's one of the most depressing times of the year. So, so stay prayed up for your neighbor and those you come in contact with, that we continue to move forward and build a Marlboro County that we all can love and that we all can benefit from.
I just want to wish y'all of a happy Thanksgiving, and I agree with the recreation program. I think we got it going in the right direction now, and I think we're gonna do some good things moving forward. I want everybody to be mindful that, you know, during the holidays, that's when things get bad, too. People start breaking in and one thing to another. So, if you, if your neighbor's gone and you see something don't look right, check them out and make sure that they, everything's okay, because it seems like during the holidays, you know, Dr. Johnson said, it's, it's, you know, good times, but for a lot of people, you know, that's when little things just dampen the whole, the whole holiday season. So, just keep that in mind, and I wish y'all of a happy Thanksgiving.
Dr. Johnson, I congratulate you on your wins, and I did congratulate Representative Henigan and Representative Hayes on their wins Tuesday night. Ran good campaigns, had a good election. The workers behind the scenes, they made it all happen. I also got to congratulate on our side Senator Tim Scott and Secretary of State Mark Hammond. They were the first two Republicans to ever win in Marlboro County, countywide, since the Civil War. So, that was two of our counties that did win in Marlboro County. But anyway, I did congratulate Representative Henigan and Representative Hayes. I've already had a call from Representative Hayes. But anyway, you're right, we're gonna move forward, you know, in elections, you know, to heat a battle, you campaign hard, you try and win, and when the election's over with, as Representative Hayes said, he said, I'm ready to do whatever I can to help Marlboro County. And that's how we, we, that's how you get by losses, you, you work with the people that win, and that goes for everybody, which side you're on, you know? When the election's over with and your side lost, you work with whoever won. Anyway, I hope everybody has a great, safe Thanksgiving, and, you know, we got about four out of five nights coming up, it's gonna be in the mid-20s, starting Thursday, so need to keep an eye on senior citizens and also your pets and stuff out, because it's gonna be, uh, starting Thursday night, we're gonna have four extremely cold nights. That's all I got.
Just quickly, I just want to thank Representative Henigan and the elected delegation for that $2 million. That, that wasn't something that they had to do, and we appreciative of just that, that effort, and we're hoping that it's the start of a, a great working relationship where they can work with us and we can work with them, and we can get some of the things that are just due for Marlboro County.
And I'd like to commend my fellow councilmen and councilwomen on a, on coming together and working together diligently on this, on this recreation initiative that we've had on our plate for quite a while. And I think we've done some powerful things for our, to betterment of our community tonight, and I think we deserve a little bit of a round of applause for ourselves. And thank you staff for getting everything together. Thank you, Ron, Wes, Doris, Doug, everybody. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, okay. All right, we stand to adjourn.